I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on July 2nd, 2018 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? See none as their motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, a listing of budget transfers were distributed to you prior to the meeting from Finance Director Brian Bouchong, and those need your approval, please.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
And then also distributed to you prior to the meeting was the financial budget summary report for the month of June 2018. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, do we have special recognition this evening?
Mr. President, members of council, I have a proclamation to present this evening, as well as a citation. And I'm going to start first with the proclamation, and I'm going to ask two individuals to come forward here. Cale Hover, who is a member of the Parks and Recreation Board. Cale, if you would please come forward, along with Kristin Ottley, our wonderful, super able Energizer Bunny, no, with the Parks and Recreation Program, so forth. But I'm sorry we weren't able to do this at the first meeting of the month. My fault. I was playing hooky. But in any event, we've had a good month at the parks, and all of its many facilities and so forth, and I think it kind of symbolizes in so many respects of what our park system is all about, and all the goodness that comes from it each and every day of the year. And so, I'm not going to, I think you'll appreciate the fact I'm not going to do all the wherances, like I did with the class of 1978. I had fun, because I asked the cheerleaders of the class to come forward. They were a little bit apprehensive about that, but we got them in the act, and that was great, great fun when we were, they were back for their 40th reunion, so we had to have a little fun on that occasion. And reading this proclamation brings to mind a lot of good things and a lot of fun things and so forth. And Cale, as a representative of your board, the Parks and Recreation Board, and Kristin, for your leadership and what you do each and every day for our park and recreation program, our park system, and our parks and our overall array, a vast array of recreational activities. I just want to say that whereas parks and recreation activities enhance the physical health and mental well-being of individuals, workforces, and communities, and I go through a number of things here, what the parks do, we all know about them, but the important thing here is too, is whereas it is the right, the right of everyone, regardless of age, race, color, religion, gender, ability, or national origin, to participate in parks and recreation programs and activities and enjoy parks and open space. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month. And so I just want to thank you all for all that you do each and every day for the parks, and you and your board and your leadership there. Thank you so much, Kristin. Appreciate it. Would you like to say anything about, or are you going to save it for your presentation?
Yeah, I'll save that for my, but I just want to say this is a, through the national Parks and, this is a national thing, that Parks and Recreation has, not a day, not a week, but a whole month.
And you are an officer, aren't you, in the state organization, a very active, you have been very active in the state organization too? And thanks, Cale, for coming in. Really appreciate it. The next is a citation, and I'm going to ask Margaret Montague to please come forward here, if you don't mind, Margaret. And some of you know that Margaret's a neighbor and a dear friend, and someone that I admire so, so very much. I said, "Well, we could do this over the backyard fence," in a sense, but that would be wrong, because Margaret, you've just, what you have done for the, our Human Relations Commission has just been nothing short of truly outstanding. You've been so dedicated from the very day you were appointed back in 2012, and I wish you were not going to be leaving the board, that you had not opted for retirement from the board, but given all that you've done and all the, it's just, you know, we often say, what do, you know, what goes with the words, you know, and a lot of it has maybe sometimes muscle, determination, so forth. You've done it all with that, because you've been so generous with your time in volunteering for all the activity, not just, you know, a couple of them, but all of the activities of the Human Relations Commission. You've always taken on leadership roles, and even sometimes standing out in days like today, passing out literature and greeting students over on the campus and elsewhere. And also, I also want to underscore my personal appreciation, I know I'm speaking on behalf of city council here, because what she did in heading up the Welcome BG Task Force was in response to a proclamation, to an ordinance, I should say, adopted by city council, and had great meaning to it, a lot of time and effort went into it. And Bruce, I know that you, particularly the member of council, have played a very significant role in working with the Welcome Bowling Green Task Force and some of their special presentations. And you've all seen this report, I know, and I trust you've had a chance to read through it, and it's very, very meaningful. I've now shared it with the commissioners of Wood County, with Wade Gotchak, the Director of Economic Development for Wood County, because Sue Clark, his counterpart, has played a very, very active role in this Welcome BG Task Force. And I've also shared it with President Rodney Rogers of BGSU and his staff there, and I'm hoping that in both instances, with the county and with the university, that we'll have an opportunity for discussion with them. I'm kind of putting the needle in a little bit. I know they have a heavy agenda right now, and it's getting near fair time for the county people and so forth, but we will keep the pressure on there and hope that we can work out a meeting very, very soon. One of the elements of this Welcome BG Task Force that's always intrigued me, and it's, I find it just very interesting, very stimulating, and very uplifting, and that's the emphasis on employment opportunities for legal immigrants. In many respects, and I know you've heard me say this, because of my own family, it's a, it's a bit, some of your recommendations are a bit of a throwback, because when I think back of my own family and the reasons they came to the United States, from Scotland and from England, was for economic opportunity, a chance to lead and live a better life. And so that's kind of, for me, it's the heart and soul of what's in here, about opportunity. And it's also about the, as many communities throughout the United States have discovered too, it's an opportunity to help meet their manpower needs, because there are so many businesses and industries in the country having a very difficult time finding workers. So putting out the welcome mat for people that, who are legal immigrants and are looking for opportunities and so forth, really means a great deal. So with all that, Margaret, thanks for bearing with me on my, probably excessive verbiage here, but it's all done right from the heart, and I really mean it very sincerely. Certificate of appreciation, whereas Margaret Montague honorably and faithfully served the City of Bowling Green from December 5, 2011, until June 30, 2018, as a member of the Human Relations Commission. During that time, Ms. Montague provided impartial, compassionate, and humanitarian leadership in promoting equality for and understanding among all people of this municipality, and proved to be a valuable commission member in her reasoned and insightful approach to community issues, thereby contributing greatly to community harmony and well-being and earning the highest respect and gratitude of the public at large. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, in acknowledgement and recognition of Margaret Montague's impressive civic record and noteworthy contributions to the community, do hereby thank and commend her for her willing and dedicated service to this municipality and award her with sincere, I want to underscore on behalf of all of us, sincere gratitude and appreciation, this certificate on behalf of all citizens of Bowling Green. Thank you so much, Margaret. We appreciate it.
So I have a confession. So when I was asked seven years ago to be on the Human Relations Commission, I had to look up online what a Human Relations Commission does. So I've lived and worked most of my life internationally, so I haven't been involved in civic government, so I tried to get up to speed as quickly as I could. So, but it has been an honor and a privilege to serve, and just the people that I've worked with, from Bruce and John, and on the Welcome BG Task Force, and others, with the leadership of Mary Jane Saunders on the Human Relations Commission, and my colleagues there, it has been such an honor. So, thank you very much, and yes.
Thank you.
We move to lobby visitation, and we'll begin with a presentation from Wendy Chambers, representing the Bowling Green Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good evening. It's a week of celebrations. Second time in 10 years that Ohio Magazine has honored BG as a best hometown, so time to celebrate. We can see that right behind the council here, with the two covers that we've had in the last 10 years. So that's pretty exciting. You've probably noticed the banner that was across the street the last couple of weeks. You'll be seeing that banner floating around town. We have some "Welcome to the Community" signs, "Thank You Brian Kraft," that we also have up, as well as banners here, there, and everywhere, celebrating this wonderful honor. We're also going to celebrate, again, with the second celebration. Our first one unfortunately got canceled, the Holiday Parade, and we will still have that theme for the Holiday Parade this year. But our second celebration will be Best of BG, a hometown celebration, which is this Thursday evening, July 19, at the Simpson Garden Park and Building. One of the many reasons that we received the honor in the first place, the second time around. Welcome BG was one of the reasons. NIOT was one of the reasons. There was a lot of things that were cited that they thought Bowling Green had grown so much in 10 years that we were worthy of the honor again. We're also going to be celebrating, hosting, the third Ohio Town and Gown Summit, showcasing BG and BGSU as a great place to learn and live, and those participants will be coming to our Best Hometown event as well, so we'll have visitors at our event, as well as our own community. We'll also be celebrating the CVB's 2017's annual report. A lot of heart and soul goes into this work. It's always good to see it down on paper after your year is completed. Some of the things that we're citing in the report this year is that we had a 6.62% increase in room nights, and we had an increase in revenue of 8% that was up from the previous year. So those are, those are good numbers. We'll be celebrating the Ohio Economic Study. It's a partnership, and I have given copies to the council. It's the first time that we've ever received the report highlighting the City of Bowling Green. They typically do it only for the county level, so we asked special if we could have the numbers for just the City of Bowling Green. So in the report, you will see Ohio, as well as regional and the City of Bowling Green. It's a partnership with the Ohio Division of Travel and Tourism and Longwoods International. It's a co-op problem to make it, or a co-op program to make it more affordable for the smaller bureaus. Key points from the economic study include, for the City of Bowling Green, total tourism impact, total sales was 110.9 million, wages were 30.2 million, and taxes were 12.6 million. It feels so good to actually have those numbers. That's just so exciting to me, after 18 years, to be able to say, where did we really fall for, for the year of 2017? I would love to know those numbers for all the years that I've been with the bureau, so that's very exciting. Bowling Green is alive and well and doing, doing well. All the reasons BG is a great place to live, work, and play, and why BG is a best hometown once again. I do want to do a little coming soon. We are in the midst of the branding program. We are going to do a community brand for Bowling Green, Ohio, that every aspect of Bowling Green can utilize, all types of businesses, restaurants, retail, the hospitality industry, our events, the city, every single business, Chamber, Economic Development, Downtown BG, anybody in the umbrella of Bowling Green, Ohio can utilize this brand, so we're pretty excited about that. We're just about to start the survey process. We are about to sit down and start making those phone calls and getting everybody around the table, so truly, truly excited about that. So that's a coming soon. So we will see you all at the events this week, and I will close with that, and have any questions for me?
Other questions for Wendy?
Wendy, we have the Welcome Bowling Green art on the wall beside you there. Is there any aspect of that to be included in the branding?
Everybody will be around the table. So the branding firm will come in, and they will sit down with different groups throughout the community, from the university to the city, to Welcome BG, NIOT, every nonprofit. We will invite people to be in those meetings and to sit around the table, if anybody is willing to give of their time. They'll be asking questions of us. What is Bowling Green, Ohio? What are we? What is our brand? What is something that resonates with who we are? And that's, that's the reason for branding in the, in the first place. Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you, Wendy.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate the information. Are there others that have signed up for lobby?
No, that's all we have.
Thank you. Moving on to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, I have an ordinance amending and adopting section 93.20 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding cost basis of service and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Daniel. Moving to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. Just a couple of things that I would like to touch on, because Wendy really did a good job of not only talking about the Convention and Visitors Bureau and all the wonderful things that occur throughout the year, and especially the economic impact on the City of Bowling Green, but she also touched upon a little bit about the important Town Gown Summit that's going to take place this week. It begins on Wednesday evening with the reception at University House, and we'll all be joining with President Rogers and greeting quite a few of the early arrivals, the participants in the two-day conference. And the first year was held at the Ohio University Regional Campus, I believe was that in Zanesville or, Zanesville, yeah, right, right. And then last year, the Town Gown Summit was held, and Oxford, on the campus of Miami University. We expect somewhere in the range of, it's hard to tell, but Lori tells me, maybe 120 to 140 participants will be coming in from around the state. I will be speaking Thursday about collaborations between Bowling Green and Bowling Green State University, and starting with the visioning process in 2012. President Rodney Rogers will also discuss the future in terms of relationship building, building on the visioning process and all the other collaborative efforts that we have The summit will feature four tracks of topics, sustainability, public safety and health, economic development, partnerships, and neighborhoods, and quality of life. I am really pleased that Mayor Mike McCann of Defiance will be addressing strategic planning issues, and Mayor Steve Patterson of Athens, we've just talked on the phone, I've not had an opportunity to meet him directly, will be speaking about engaging leadership. One of the intriguing sessions will be titled, "Putting the Green in Bowling Green," and featuring Dr. Nick Hennessy, Sustainability Manager at BGSU, and two outstanding city employees, Amanda Gambi, City Sustainability Coordinator, and Cindy Stutzman of our BG Parks and, who is our BG Parks Natural Resources Specialist. On Thursday, from 4:30 to 6:30, and open the wall, as Wendy has identified, here will be the hometown celebration out at the Simpson Garden Park. And the final sessions will be on Friday morning, will feature a session on coordinated master planning between the City of Kent and KSU, a topic that I've watched evolve, given my relationships with that city and that university, as well as an intriguing session about demographics and their host cities, with the Chair of Sociology at BGSU, Dr. Susan Brown. Another good information session will focus on current, the current hot topic of Ohio's new medical marijuana law, and that will take place from 10:30 to 11:30. It goes without saying that this has been a huge undertaking, and especially for Lori, and of course for Heather Saylor. Heather has really taken on a major leadership role in this, but Lori and Heather have been attendants at the other two summits, and so this is a third one for them, a first time for, for me, and, but, and what I like in going through the program, Lori, is that you're looking at a range of topics that impact the state as a whole, not just focusing in on, it's not all about Bowling Green, but what we're taking a look at the state as a whole, and seeing some of the really very good things going on elsewhere, some that we've worked on and been involved with and so forth. So I'm grateful to you, Lori, and to Heather, and of course to our friends at Four Corners. They've also played a major role in this, and you've heard from Wendy, but there's Sue Clark there, and Mary Henkelman also here, and there is Earlene in the back in her usual chair, the Earlene Kilpatrick, so. And Earlene, I don't know if you've recovered yet from the, from our most recent ribbon cutting, but I said, the folks out there at the tire retreading manufacturing facility have, have really set a whole new gold standard for ribbon cuttings. I don't know how we can ever beat that. I mean, bringing in the Goodyear Blimp, landing at Bowling Green International Airport, or I should say Wood, Wood County Airport, but the Travel Centers of America, the new tire retread manufacturing plant at Woodbridge Industrial Park, it's a great story. And Sue, I know time and again, time and again, those folks, their leadership team, said, "It's all because of Sue." And I believe them, and we really appreciate all that you did to bring them in and then to work with them through the myriad of details that we all know is involved in any one of these transactions and so forth. So the ribbon ceremony was loads of fun, and a spread of food like I've not seen before, and even a cake that was in the form of a tire, and it was all very, very interesting. But in any event, it was a good day for Bowling Green, and having the blimp land here, and then having the President of Travel Americas Group and the Executive Vice President say, "What a beautiful community you have. We've been up in that." And they were flying all around, so, and really enjoying it. So, Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report, unless you have questions for me.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards? Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
On your agenda tonight, we have a piece of legislation that we are asking for three readings and an emergency clause, and I think when we do such a thing, I want to make sure that we explain a little bit about what we're doing here. This is your ordinance amending section 9320 regarding cost basis of service, and what cost basis of a service it's referring to is providing fire service outside of the city limits. Now, this is not something we do very often, because fortunately, the Bowling Green Fire Division has a proud history of this, we have amazing relationships with all of our surrounding townships and other areas where we have mutual aid and so forth. But there are some cases where the city would consider being in a contract relationship, and it's been since 1994, since we actually last updated this legislation. And what got us looking at it is that one of the places we've often had contracts with is the fairgrounds. As you know, that's outside of the city limits, but it's essentially surrounded by the city. And so we have contracted with them at times to provide the fire service. They are opening a new building, and that building, of course, is built to current code, and in looking at the fire suppression system that is in there, it got us thinking that we should maybe make a credit available in negotiating, in looking at these contracts that, that we would be able to provide in giving them a price. So that's what the change is here. It would be allowing for it to be up to a half of credit for any building on the property that met current fire code, for, maybe given for structures on the parcel that meet current fire suppression standards as set by the Ohio Fire Code and the Ohio Building Code. So we ask for your consideration of that this evening, and also just want to remind you that we have another Firefly Festival coming up here on Friday night. As with the last one, you will be seeing a closure of Main Street on Friday afternoon, and the removal of parking in the downtown area that starts mid-afternoon on Friday, and then we close the Main Street. I think we've, at a previous council meeting, talked about how wonderful the first one went, and we're pretty excited about another one coming through. Of course, they have a volunteer committee that's just working so very hard to bring that to our community, and so we hope to see you downtown on Friday night. That completes my report, subject to your questions.
Other questions for Lori?
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor, not appear to be with us this evening. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Very quickly, as it is July, thank you again, Mayor, for acknowledging that month of Parks and Recreation. There's just, there's so much going on. I did want to highlight though, and just point out for you all, because there's so many programs and events going on that I feel like it, even myself, it's hard to know everything that's going on every minute of every day, but there's always something going on. But I just wanted to sort of highlight that we continually try to sort of monitor trends and see what people are interested in, and to meet the needs of our citizens and the surrounding community. So there are a couple of things coming up that are kind of new, and then also tap into some of the talent that we get every summer from BGSU and other campuses with students being home. There's a couple of new programs and events coming up, so just wanted to highlight those. If anyone is interested, I do have flyers. I'm not going to hand them out, but the first one is actually a date change. We have a, the inaugural, because first annual is never to be used, so inaugural, Throw to Glow Disc Golf Event, and that was originally scheduled for this Wednesday, July 18. In promoting that, it was aimed at just children, and we got a lot of interest from adults saying, "Wait a minute, I really like disc golf. I want to come and play at night with glowing disc golf." So we actually sort of stepped back a bit, and so they, they put it a little bit later in the summer, July 28, and that is now available for all ages and all skill levels. It will be a little clinic, if there's anyone that needs to learn how to play before doing that. Do not ask me, it's the one sport I'm just not good at, so. So there may be one other, but that one definitely. I don't know why. But anyway, so that sounds super exciting. That is July 28th at Carter Park, obviously, from 8:00 to 9:30 when it's dark. And youth lacrosse, for a couple of years now, we've been trying to get some traction going. With that, there is a lot of interest. If we get a nucleus, we can start doing some leagues. We've done some skill clinics. So we do have some drop-in nights behind the community center at the athletic fields for youth lacrosse this summer. So again, if anyone's interested, I do have more info, but I wanted to make you aware of that. And in conjunction with the library's summer reading theme for our Party in the Park at the end of the summer that we partner with them on, there will be a Rockin' Talent Show, and so that is open to all ages as well. And there are auditions coming up. Information's on our website. Auditions on July 26th. I'm not really sure what the auditions will entail. Again, I'm just presenting the information, but I'm guessing they'll be quite lenient to kind of figure out what they've got for the actual talent show at the Party in the Park at the end of the summer, Tuesday, August 7th. And last but not least, there's a real interest in the youth in Bowling Green, I think due to the fantastic theater program at the high school for musical theater. And so we are adding on to the wonderful program that Horizon Youth Theater does and offering an additional opportunity this summer for children age 6 to 12, musical theater camp in Needle Hall Stage. There's much more going on, and the pool is doing well. The hot weather, I know, it's kind of a bummer, but just think about the pool, and then you'll feel better. But that is all that I have unless you have any questions.
Questions for Kristen. Thank you.
Talent show signups? I'm looking at you.
City Attorney, Mr. Marsh, is not with us this evening. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Questions for Brian. Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Questions for Mr. Kraft. Thank you. That completes our official reports. I will ask if we have any council committee reports this evening.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon.
I just wanted to publicly announce that we are rescheduling the meeting of the Community Improvement Committee that was going to be held tonight to be held on August 6th at 6:00 PM before our regular meeting to continue discussing potential language about anti-discrimination in our city charter preamble.
Very good. Thank you, Daniel. We have that on the calendar.
Yes.
Thank you. Additional council committee reports. Okay, Kay, reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Ordinance Number 8701 for first reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give Ordinance 8701 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
My understanding is the main purpose for moving this along is because it involves escrow, and somebody needs to get their money back from that escrow or demolition.
Thank you. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8701.
Ordinance Number 8701 for second and third reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
And, am I correct, we don't need the emergency clause?
No, that's correct.
So I move that we adopt Ordinance 8701.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8702.
Ordinance Number 8702 for second and third reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 93.20 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding cost basis for service and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8702 its second and third readings.
Tag it.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8702.
Ordinance Number 8702 for second and third reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 93.20 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding cost basis of service and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8702.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8702.
And, Mr. President, I move to adopt Ordinance 8702.
Tag it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8702 is adopted.
Legislation for second reading, Resolution Number 3705 for second reading, resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give Resolution 3705 its third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3705.
Resolution Number 3705 for third reading, resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt Resolution 3705.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3705 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8698 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to pay for school police, interns, civil infractions, hearing officer, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 8699 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for tree trimming and removal Ordinance Number 8700 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts with the Village of Portage for wastewater treatment Legislation for third reading, Resolution Number 3704 for third reading, resolution authorizing the city of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval.
Mr. President?
Ms. Roland.
I move to adopt Resolution 3704.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3704 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8696 for third reading, ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt Ordinance 8696.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.